Good afternoon, welcome everybody. We're glad to have our guests and visitors today to the Secret of War Commissioners Call Meeting, December 21. Motion approved the agenda as presented. Motion by Commissioner McCourt. Say goodbye Commissioner McCourt. All in favor, please raise your hand. 4-0. Moving into the regular agenda. I'd like to consider Executive Session, so to CCM, Section 50, 14, 21 for the purpose of consulting and meeting with legal counsel pertaining to pending and potential litigation settlement claims, administrative proceedings or other judicial actions brought or to be brought by or against the agency or any officer or employee or in which agency or any officer or employee may be directly involved. Motion by Commissioner McCourt. Say goodbye Commissioner McCourt. All in favor, please rise and join us. Go back to your conversation.
I have the other side.
Motion to come back in from executive session. Motion by Mr. Tinsley, say goodbye Commissioner Ward. Six zero. All right. Under item two is consider authorized C manager present an offer via certificate of distribution for lost allegations to Spalding County. Do we have a motion regards to our action towards the offer made by Spalding County?
Make a motion with deny.
We have a motion to deny by Commissioner Tinsley. Give me a second. Second, Ms. Murray, all of you, please sit down. Raise your hand. Five zero. Ms. O'Connor, you go ahead with your presentation.
All right, thank you.
That was five zero. Or six zero. Five zero.
Okay. All right, I'm not gonna, based on what we discussed in executive session, I'm not going to touch base and read through every single slide that I have presented to you all. But there are a few that I think need to be mentioned. First and foremost is what our current distribution of the local option sales taxes. As I hope you know at this point, the city of Griffin for the last 10 years has received 40.5% in local option sales tax. Spalding County has received 59.5%, which totals for this last 12 months, according to Spalding County's loss report, over $12.9 million. With the city receiving 5.23 and the county receiving 7.68. Our statute that we are looking at in order to determine what the percentages of that distribution should be is ACGA 48-889B. There are eight different criteria that should be calculated in determining what those percentages of distribution should look like. Again, I'm not going to read through all of that for you. I will just say that there are eight and it is very clear from the intent of the general assembly that you will include all eight in your calculation and not rely on one any heavier than you do the other. They do not give any kind of recommendation that you do that. If they did, they would just say to use that one criteria. So in our opinion, all of them have to be looked at and used. So what we did most recently after attending the county's meeting on Monday was go through each of the measurements based on the criteria to show what they reflected from a city's point of view and a county's point of view because a lot of questions have been coming in regards to how we get such different numbers if there are eight criteria. Shouldn't it just be a formula? Shouldn't it just be a fact? And again, I won't read through these, but I think it's important to note, even for the first one, the city not only interprets the criteria in a little different, it actually thinks that there's three criteria within that. So there's the service delivery responsibility, there's a daytime population responsibility, then there's an inherent value to the community of a central business district. And so when you take those percentages and see what they look like as an average and you do the same, you actually can't do the same with the county's measurement because they didn't do it that way. They looked at countywide daytime population, road miles, and the MNO property digest. And so their numbers come out very differently than the city's numbers. I will note that the MNO property tax digest is not going to count exempt properties in there. So a lot of those properties happen to be within the city limits. So you're not gonna look at what that looks like at that point. But yet, we're still required to provide services to those cities if we don't get property tax or provide services to those structures if we don't get property taxes from them. So I think that's an important distinction that was never made from the county's measurement. The second one is the service delivery responsibilities of each political subdivision to the resident population of that subdivision. Again, this is sort of different in how that was counted. For us, we counted our share, the expenditures for supplementary powers. The county measured it as countywide residential population. They actually double counted city residents and it dilutes the number then for the city. So the county came up with 74.74% to the county, 25.37% to the city. What I'll also just take a moment to note is that they use a consultant whose name is Phil Sutton. He represents communities throughout the state in regards to loss negotiations. And what I found most interesting is that he at the exact same time is representing the city of Edenton and Edenton-Putnam County's loss mediations. And in his report for Edenton, I'm going to quote what he says. He says, "The topic of double counting a city's population has been consistently rejected in loss negotiations. The fact remains that the universally accepted method to measure county's population compares unincorporated population and incorporated population divided by the total county population. Aggregate method of measurement assumes uniform service delivery throughout the county. However, many county services are only provided to the unincorporated area and several city services are provided countywide. You could pretty much just fill in the word Griffin and it would make the exact same argument." Criteria three, existing service delivery responsibility of each political subdivision. Actually, our numbers were much lower for the city here in regards to what the county put for us. I just think that's interesting to note. Again, you can show how skewed you can make these numbers depending on what data you use. Criteria four is the effect of a change in sales tax distribution on the ability to repay debt. We actually did not even use this in our calculation to come up with 51% at the beginning because it's so skewed in the direction of the city. We have taken on almost $100 million in debt for water and sewer infrastructure that benefits the entirety almost of this county. Countywide, we have $100 million in debt, yet all of that is being assumed by the city, 77.45% of it. Their consultant argues that that doesn't matter because he only is gonna count general obligation bonds because that's only what's repaid by property taxes. I would like to make that argument to a city resident and see what they have to say to me because they're paying for it. What the county uses is the current loss distribution of 40.5 and 59.5. Not sure how that even amounts to an argument. Criterion five is point of sale. Again, this is one that I think is pretty straightforward. However, when you look at it based on the two different numbers, it comes across very differently. Our share total sales from retail trade, accommodation and food service is 74.26% in the city, 25.74% in the county. The county used the commercial and industrial digest with U.S. Census sales data. So they used 100% of the NACS codes, but not 100% of the NACS codes generate loss. So they came up with 40.5% to the city and 59.43% to the county. Because of course, any sale that occurs in the city occurs in the county. Well, if you use that logic, then any business that's sitting in the city is going to have to pay occupational taxes with the city and the county. That is not the intent of the legislature. That is not what is required. Criterion six is the existence of intergovernmental agreements. All right, so criterion six is the existence of IGAs among and between political subdivisions. Both of us say that service delivery strategy should account for this. And it should, however, in what we submitted to the Department of Community Affairs over a month and a half ago, there is admitted double taxation of $1 million for services such as code enforcement, animal control, planning and zoning, building. And that was not rectified in service delivery. So it either needs to be rectified through special service districts, which should have taken place in service delivery, or it taken place in service delivery, or it needs to be rectified through loss distribution, and nobody has said a word about that so far. Criterion seven. Again, this is sort of a property tax burden area. So we looked at the shared property tax burden, and we established from the special service districts, which would be forty four point four eight percent to the city, fifty four point eight eight percent to the county. The county doesn't give us a measurement. They just say it's tax equity. But we've already said that we've admitted to a million dollars with the tax inequity in our service delivery strategy, but nobody's mentioning how we're gonna cut with that. And then finally, criteria eight is the coordinated plan for service delivery and financing, which is really sort of your general allocation of your loss distribution. What we came up with as the city is fifty one point four seven percent to the city, forty eight point two one percent to the county. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. The county came up with sixty nine point four one percent to the county and thirty point five nine percent to the city. I think that y'all know that this has been ongoing since July. We have talked a lot back and forth in regards to what we should do. And currently, where we stand is the city of Griffin offering to keep the distribution the same for the next 10 years at forty point five percent, Spalding County at fifty nine and a half percent. On Monday night, the county unanimously agreed to provide an offer of forty percent in year one to the city, sixty percent to the county. Year two would be thirty nine percent to the city, sixty one percent to the county. Year three at thirty eight and a half percent to the city, sixty one and a half percent to the county. Year four, thirty eight percent to the city, sixty two percent to the county. Year five, thirty seven and a half percent to the city, sixty two and a half percent to the county. And then year six through 10, thirty seven percent to the city and sixty three percent to the county. If I'm your average county citizen, I'm probably wondering why the city would not take that, because it's forty percent to the city, we're only losing half a percent. You average that out over 10 years, the actual percentage that we would receive is thirty seven point eight percent to the city. Nowhere close to forty percent, nowhere close to what we receive now. So if you look at that in a mathematical calculation, you're actually looking at over a percentage, over that 10 years' time, losing almost three point five million dollars. That is not something that I can stomach. That is not something that I want to tell our employees I'm willing to do. That is not something that I'm willing to tell our citizens I'm going to do. I cannot make that recommendation, and I appreciate you agreeing with that and denying my offer. Kelsey, Drew, and I have some concerns about whether it's even legal. The Department of Revenue supposedly says it is. We disagree. We think it is binding, it says it councils, and that legislative statute does not give you the authority to do that. This is not one of those exemptions. Even the certificate of distribution from the Department of Revenue gives you an ability to fill out one percentage for 10 years. Even if it's not legal, I don't think it is the right thing to do for our citizens or our employees. It's going ahead and telling them that we want you to perform in the same level of service at the same rate now, guaranteed that we're going to lose money over the next several years. It's not a good idea, and I don't have any intention of accepting it. We also looked at what it would look like to meet the county halfway or a quarter of the way or almost three quarters of the way. Those percentages range from thirty nine point seven five percent. If you met them 28 percent of the way, you met them halfway to what they've offered and what the current distribution is, it would be thirty nine point, small, I'm sorry, one, two, five. And then at sixty five percent of the way, you're at thirty eight point seven five. Over that length of time for 10 years, if you went to thirty eight point seven five, you're losing two point two six million dollars over 10 years, about two hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. Again, we would not be asking to cut services. We don't want to do that. We think that what we provide to our citizens is of value. We think that the city of Griffin has prospered over the last 10 years. I think you can walk out that door right there, and you can see it immediately. And that is because of the efforts of our staff and our citizens to come down here and rejuvenate this entire community. We had our parade back downtown, because that's where everybody wanted to be. That's all we've heard, is how much they love being down here. But yet, it's supposed to be that we just throw that away and go ahead and for the better of the entire community, because we gained 3,000 people, let's forget about all of that and go back down to thirty seven point eight percent. We can't do that, and I'm not suggesting that we shouldn't.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connor. Any board members have anything to say with what I opened that?
So our staff has worked diligently in this process. This has been a, this isn't a one-year issue. This is three decades of us continually battling over one percent. To put it into equation, per city budget, we bring in about four point two million dollars in property tax, five point two five million dollars in loss tax. Our military rate is just over seven mil, so a four million dollar home pays roughly seven hundred dollars in city tax. If we lose lost, we understand this, it points to 10 mils of tax. So the city of Griffin would have to, on a quarter million dollar house, would effectively have to raise our military rate to seventeen bills, which is an additional thousand dollars per quarter million dollars of assessment. That's just not residential homes, that's on businesses, industry, and folks that make a difference every day in our lives. We also have a workforce that is struggling to survive, because we can't maintain a compensation level that's expected to maintain a hundred percent workforce. And those employees, I want to thank each of you that have stuck in, stuck with us over the last several months as we've debated this. We appreciate each of you for what you're willing to do for our community, knowing what we're trying to go into the future. Just want to wish you each a very Merry Christmas. And to Ms. O'Connor, to the staff, thank you very much for your efforts to this and patience. Does anybody else have any other comment?
We have a motion from the board at this point.
Do you want to stand at forty point five percent?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we keep our current distribution at forty point five percent.
Have a motion by Mr. Court, second by Ms. Murray. We have another session. All in favor, please stick your hand. Five, zero, forty point five, fifty nine point five. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Merry Christmas to everybody. Thank y'all for being here. Be safe. God bless you.
Merry Christmas.